I'd call a meeting of order if we would, please. Pastor, if you could leave us an invocation, we certainly appreciate you being with us.
Let us pray. Our dear Heavenly Father, we thank you once again for the gift of life and another day, Lord, to move about and have our being. We thank you for this privilege of being in this place. Lord, we ask that you will bless this gathering and you'll give your wisdom as these elected people represent we, the citizens of the County of Frederick. Lord, we ask you that there will be wise stewards and, Lord, that you will get glory out of everything that's done here, that you will smile. Lord, we ask your blessings upon this meeting. We ask you your blessings upon our nation, the Commonwealth of Virginia, and our county, our President, our Governor, and these fine people here elected to represent us. Lord, help us today to bring glory to your name. We thank you for the gift of your Son, the Lord Jesus, and whose birthday we're about to celebrate. Help us not to forget what the lives you've given us are truly all about. We pray in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen.
Thank you, sir. Chairman Lofton, would you leave us the pledge, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, sir. Adoption of the agenda.
Mr. Chairman.
Supervisor Trout.
In light of the disagreements between the parties involved in the Carpers Valley rezoning, I'm not comfortable voting on this issue tonight. At this point, I have concerns about whether the rezoning, proposed zoning appropriately mitigates the impact of this rezoning as it's currently written. That being said, I move to postpone the public hearing and vote for rezoning 0-03-18 for Carpers Valley Industrial Park for 60 days so the parties involved can settle their differences.
All right. You've heard the motion.
Second.
Remove item 0318. Second. Is there any discussion?
Mr. Chairman.
Supervisor Lofton.
Although I would agree that maybe a short time to consider this might be in order, I think 60 days to me is too long. Like action, 60 days gives too much time for inaction, so I would offer an amendment to that motion to have this reconsidered at the second meeting in January.
You've heard the proposed amendment. Is there a second? Anyone?
I'll second it.
Second. Is there any discussion?
Question, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Lofton, if it were 60 days and they wanted to come, if they resolved things beforehand, they could still come forward beforehand, could they not? I'm just asking as a point of information.
They could request it.
Okay.
I'm confident the board would grant.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
Because it's a public, it has a required public hearing, we would need to know, staff would need to know the date to advertise it, so it would, I mean, there's only one other board meeting in that intervening time, which is the first meeting in January, so the deadline to get the advertising done for that would be coming up in the next few days.
Right. It's the reason for the 60.
Mr. Chairman.
Supervisor Lofton.
If I may, the reason I ask to move this up some, and it's only a two-week move, is like I say, there's going to be times when there's action and inaction, and I think the longer the timeframe, the more opportunity there is for inaction, so I'd like to get this resolved as quickly as possible. I think give both parties time enough to discuss anything that they may have contention with and get something worked out and bring them back to the board, so that's why I say the second meeting in January at the latest.
Okay. Any further discussion? All right. The motion is to amend. Supervisor Trout. Motion to go the second meeting in January as opposed to 60 days. Are we ready to vote? Supervisor Trout.
Aye.
Supervisor Dunn.
Aye.
Supervisor Lofton.
Aye.
Supervisor Wells.
Aye.
Supervisor Slaughter.
Aye.
Supervisor McCarthy.
Aye.
Chair votes aye and the motion carries. Now vote the amended motion to remove rezoning 0318 Carpers Valley from our agenda this evening. Schedule it for the second meeting in January. Is there any discussion? Supervisor Trout.
Aye.
Supervisor Dunn.
Aye.
Supervisor Lofton.
Aye.
Supervisor Wells.
Aye.
Supervisor Slaughter.
Aye.
Supervisor McCarthy.
Aye.
Chair votes aye, motion carries. Entertain a motion to adopt the amended agenda.
Subdued.
Second.
Second. Any discussion? All those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no. We'll adopt the agenda as amended. All right. Get flipped over. That'll bring us to Board of Supervisors comments. Are there any? Oh, wait, wait. I missed something.
Some comments.
Some comments. Anyone sign up?
Yes, sir.
All right. Now that'll bring us to...
Consent agenda.
Consent.
I'm sorry?
Consent agenda is the next item.
Can't hear.
Consent agenda is next.
We just adopted the, oh, yes, the consent agenda, I'm sorry. All right. Consent agenda as presented.
I would move to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Sorry.
And second, is there any discussion? All those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no. We'll adopt the consent agenda as presented. That will bring us to Board of Supervisors comments. Are there any? Hearing none, we'll move forward. County officials. Committee appointments. Local emergency management. We have a request.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, we have a request from the L.A.P.C. to nominate John Petrie of the Lord Fairfax Emergency Medical Services Council to serve as a member of the L.A.P.C.
How would the board like to handle this one?
A motion to approve Mr. Petrie to serve on the Lord Fairfax Emergency Medical Services Council.
All right, you've heard the motions. Is there a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion? All those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no. Mr. Petrie is appointed. Extension leadership, Red Bud.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to appoint Tom Denny Jr. to the position.
You've heard the motions. Is there a second?
Second.
Second. Any discussion? All those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no. Thank you, sir. Mr. Denny's appointed. Planning Commission Member-at-Large, I'd ask the board to confirm Alan Morrison as Member-at-Large.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
I'd like to nominate Mr. Morrison as the Planning Commissioner-at-Large.
Sir, second.
Second.
Second. Any discussion? All those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no.
No.
Mr. Morrison is appointed. Shawnee Land Sanitary District, Mr. Lofton.
Mr. Chairman, if I could have the indulgence of the board, I would like to put off making any appointments to the Shawnee Land Sanitary District Advisory Committee until January.
All right, sir. Hanny Regional Library Board, application for Lou Costello. Would the board like to handle this one?
Mr. Chairman, I would move for approval of the application of Lou Costello to the Hanny Regional Library Board.
Second.
Yes, sir.
Second.
Second. Any discussion? All those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no. Costello's appointed. Historic Resources Advisory Board, Back Creek.
Yes, sir. Mr. Chairman, I have talked to Mr. Crawford. He is willing to be appointed again to the Historic Resources Advisory Board, and I would so move.
Heard the motions. Is there a second?
Second.
Second. Any discussion? All those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no. Crawford's reappointed, and it's very good news. Okay. Any appointments? Board of Equalizations, we're seeking applications. If anyone would have an interest in serving on the Board of Equalization, please contact staff. Northwestern Community Services Board, we have two members, both willing to be reappointed. How would the board like to handle these?
Chairman, I would move that we reappoint Gussell Morrison and Sandra W. Durkle to their positions on the, to continue their positions at the Northwestern Community Services Board.
Thanks, sir. You've heard the motions. Is there a second?
Second.
Second. Any discussion? All those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no. Mr. Morrison and Ms. Durkle are reappointed. Economic Development Authority, Doug Rinker eligible. Have we spoken with him?
We've asked EDA staff to contact Mr. Rinker, but we have not heard back yet.
All right, so we'll delay. Frederick Winchester Service Authority, a three-year term of Gene Fisher. How would the board like to handle this one?
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
I'd nominate Mr. Fisher.
All right, you've heard the motion. Is there a second?
Second, Mr. Chairman.
Second. Is there any discussion? All those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no. Thank you. Fisher's reappointed. Parks and Recs Commission, three-year term of Rusty Sandy, Charles Sandy, eligible for reappointment. Have we spoken with him?
No, sir, we've not, but I can have Parks and Rec staff reach out to Mr. Sandy to gauge his interest.
I'll get ahold of him, too, as a liaison for Parks and Rec.
All right, thank you both.
I'll take care of it.
Okay. That will finish up committee assignments. Refresh, request from the Commissioner of Revenue for refunds?
Mr. Chairman, we have five of these this evening. The first is for American Telephone and Telegraph, AT&amp;T, in the amount of $2,712.34. That's the exoneration of a public services tax for 2018, which results from an annual public service assessment by the state of Virginia. It's been reviewed and approved by the county attorney. Would you like me to go on? Do you want to do all these at once?
I think that we can probably accomplish that if you would.
The second is similar. It's for APS PLC LLC, in the amount of $40,650.10, and again, that's a public service tax exoneration as the previous exoneration. The next three are all to undisclosed taxpayers, and they are disability relief for veterans, and this is a real estate exemption, the first being in the amount of $3,491.52, and that's for real estate taxes for 2016 through the first half of 2018. The second is in the amount of $3,907.32, and that's an exoneration for the years 2011 through 2016. And then the final one is in the amount of $7,296.79, and that's for the years 2011 through 2018. All of these have been reviewed and authorized by the county attorney.
All right, sir, thank you. How would the board like to handle these refunds?
Mr. Chairman, I would move for approval of refund for American Telephone and Telegraph, $2,712.34, and the corresponding supplemental appropriation. Refund for APC PCS LLC for $40,650.10, the refund and the corresponding supplemental appropriation. Undisclosed taxpayer disabled veteran relief, $3,491.52. Undisclosed taxpayer disabled veteran relief, $3,907.32. And undisclosed taxpayer disabled veteran relief, $7,296.79, to approve the refund and the corresponding supplemental appropriations.
Heard the motions. Is there a second?
Second.
Second. Any discussion? Supervisor McCarthy.
Aye.
Supervisor Slaughter.
Aye.
Supervisor Wells.
Aye.
Supervisor Lofton.
Aye.
Supervisor Dunn.
Aye.
Supervisor Trout.
Aye.
Chair votes aye, motion carries. Committee business, Public Works Committee.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
I would move for adoption and approval of the submitted procedures documents submitted by Public Works as guidance for those members of our community requesting sanitary district status for their subdivisions.
Thank you, sir. You've heard the motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Second. Is there any discussion?
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
I would just like to say I really appreciate the hard work that our county attorney and staff have done to come up with this procedure. It's something fairly new to the state of Virginia, and I think they did an excellent job cutting something from whole cloth and creating something that should serve us well into the future.
Further discussion, anyone? All right, are we ready? Supervisor Trout.
Aye.
Supervisor Dunn.
Aye.
Supervisor Lofton.
Aye.
Supervisor Wells.
Aye.
Supervisor Slaughter.
Aye.
Supervisor McCarthy.
Aye.
Chair votes aye and the motion carries.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, there was some consideration in that Public Works Committee about whether the residents of Mountain Falls Park who had started the process should go back and restart the process with these new procedures, or whether we can just ask them to continue on from where they had ended their procedures into the rest of the procedures that we have outlined. How, I don't know if that would take a motion, or how we go about doing that. Do we instruct them, do we instruct staff to instruct them to back and start again, or can we just say, start where you left off and proceed from there?
Don't know where they left off.
They presented us with a petition, which is part of the procedures document, so maybe Mr. Chairman can add to that.
Chairman, if I could, when this was last before the board and you sent it to committee, it was at a public hearing, and that public hearing was continued, so it's still kind of an open item, if you will. One option would be to just allow those residents that are interested in trying to get the sanitary district created to come back with whatever information they're able to put together in conjunction with those criteria and procedures you just adopted. The questions still remain for the board. Within the legislation, there's a number of criteria that you're supposed to evaluate. Some of that information has been gathered by staff, some of it remains somewhat uncertain, particularly the level of support amongst the residents. So the board could decide to schedule a subsequent public hearing following up on your postponement and see where we're at at that point. That's one possibility.
Thank you, sir. Other thoughts? Personally, I mean, we could hold the public hearing regardless. It's also a requirement of the state code and then go from there, but the demonstration of support from the owners is required by the state code. We don't have any flexibility there.
Right.
So, how would the board like to handle this?
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
I would move that we schedule a public hearing for this at our first meeting in February and recommend to the residents who have applied to use the criteria to the best advantage that they can over the next month and, two months and a half, or a month and a half that is there, to start to put together the remainder of the information that we would need to make a decision at that time.
I'll be second, I wish.
Okay. And a second, is there discussion? I guess my only comment would be is that we can have the public hearing anytime. The public hearing comment does not substantiate 50 percent.
Right.
Mr. Chairman.
Further discussion? Yes, sir.
I thought of the 50 percent, there has to be some verifiable way to demonstrate that there is a 50 percent, so even if people showed up here to public hearing, there were 30 of them, it doesn't represent 50 percent of the total, so you'd have to have some type of John says yes, Sally says no type thing, would you not?
Yes. It has to be auditable.
Okay.
The state code, we don't control that.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
So why would we schedule a public hearing before the residents told us that they were prepared with that information? I guess is my question.
That's a good question.
Mr. Chairman, the public hearing, as far as I understand it, is still ongoing, so we're not really scheduling a new public hearing. We are in the middle of a public hearing that's sort of been postponed, so we're just putting a date certain on when we will decide on something that's been lingering now for, you know, the better part of a year, once we get to the February meeting.
Yes, sir.
Mr. McCarthy? So if there's a public hearing in February, at that time, to meet the requirement, you'd have to have at least 50 percent, you'd have to have a verifiable 50 percent, so a public hearing without that information gives us no room to move, correct?
We are in, and the county attorney can correct me if I'm wrong, but we're in a public hearing, so we are not, it's not going to be moot because we are required to deliberate and decide on the question before us in the current public hearing that's been postponed. All I'm suggesting is that we have a date certain to make that decision, which gives the community, you know, the next month and a half to try and come up with the verifiable information, and what you're asking for as far as the 50 percent verifiable is one of many criteria that we'll have to look at when we make our final decision.
My other comment, Mr. Chairman, is that we can have that public hearing, but I'd like to see before that public hearing all the other criteria that are being fulfilled so that we know what we're voting on and dealing with.
But at the moment, we have a motion. Is there any further discussion?
Mr. Chairman, can we restate the motion? No, it's got a little convoluted in my head.
The motion was that we reconvene the public hearing at the first...
First February meeting.
First February meeting to continue it.
Okay, thank you.
It could be an update of where they are, who knows? Any further discussion? We clear on the motion? All those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no. We'll continue the public hearing to the first meeting in February. That will bring us to the 12-month outdoor festival permit for Belgrove.
Mr. Chairman, as most board members will be familiar, we have created a process whereby an entity that holds more than one event in a year can apply for a 12-month outdoor festival permit application. Belgrove has held one of these for a couple of years now, at least, the 12-month, they've held the festival for a number of years, but that's the nature of this application.
Thank you.
I know Belgrove is represented here, if there's questions.
I'm sorry?
I say I know that Belgrove is represented here, if there's questions.
All right. Is there anything you'd like to add?
I am Kristin Layes. I'm the Executive Director at Belgrove, and that's in the Back Creek District. I just want to thank the Board of Supervisors for reviewing our application and considering our permit. We've had very successful events. We had a new event come this year from out of state. This is the first time this Farm-to-Fork Fondo bicycle event came. It celebrates rural heritage and cycling and fitness and local food and drink, and they chose Belgrove specifically, and I know they would join me in thanking the county, the town of Middletown, and other municipalities for all their assistance. They had such a positive experience in our community that they'll be back in September of 2019. And I also want to take the opportunity to thank the Frederick County Sheriff's Office for their assistance with some of the security issues we had with one of our events this year. They're outstanding and excellent to work with, so thank you.
We're very proud of them as well. Thank you. Questions? Anyone? All right. How would the board like to handle this?
Mr. Chairman.
Public hearing.
Sorry?
Public hearing?
Public hearing? No.
I'm sorry. Never.
Mr. Chairman.
Public hearing. Would anyone like to comment concerning this application for a 12-month outdoor festival permit application? Anyone at all? Being no one, we'll close the public hearing. How would the board like to handle it?
Mr. Chairman, I think we all agree that the Belgrove plantation holds premier events throughout the year. They're well attended, and as Ms. Layes said, they do bring some folks and some money into the county, so I would move to approve the 12-month 2019 outdoor festival permit application for Belgrove.
Heard the motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Second. Any discussion? Supervisor Trout.
Aye.
Supervisor Dunn.
Aye.
Supervisor Lofton.
Aye.
Supervisor Wells.
Aye.
Supervisor Slaughter.
Aye.
Supervisor McCarthy.
Aye.
Chair votes aye, and the motion carries, and the festival permit is approved. Thank you very much. That will bring us to other planning business, request for pump and haul permit. Ms. Perkins.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. This is a request for a permanent pump and haul system for an existing residence located at 721 Smithfield Avenue. Now, it's approximately 1.16 acre property, contains a two-bedroom, one full and one-half bathroom home, it's about 720 square feet, constructed in 1945. If I can direct you to the screen on your left, the subject property is outlined in It is fronted by Smithfield Avenue. This is a picture of the subject property. Now, the Health Department has concluded that the existing sewage disposal system is failing and it cannot be repaired, and that a pump and haul system is the only feasible onsite option for the property based on the current regulations and site conditions. I would note that the dwelling is 306 feet from the closest city sewer line and 670 feet from the closest county sewer line, and Chapter 161 gives the property the ability to apply for a pump and haul if they are more than 300 feet from a sewer system. And this is just a graphic provided to us by the city. As you can see, the existing city sewer line runs along Green Street, and the subject property, as I stated, is 306 feet. Now, the property owners appear to have addressed the requirements to utilize the pump and haul for the property. They have also, they also have an agreement with Green Septic Service, so tonight we're seeking a decision from the board on this permanent pump and haul system. I would be glad to answer any questions, and the property owner is here as well.
Thank you. Any questions, Ms. Perkins?
Mr. Perkins, it's my understanding that this particular residence was approved of pump and haul permit prior, and that...
No, sir.
I was told that that happened, but there was a time limit to put it in, and it wasn't established at that time.
I'm not familiar with that one. I don't have an older approval for this property.
Okay.
Other questions, Ms. Perkins?
Ms. Perkins, the pump and haul on a monthly basis or a takeaway basis is approximately how much each time of month?
It's about $300 per load, depending on the size of the family, you could look at pumping it twice a month.
So that's a $7,200 a year. 300 times 2 is 6. 6,000, oh, 72. Okay, thank you.
Can't do math in my head, sorry.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
Ms. Perkins, with regard to the agreement with the sanitation vendor, is this to be a monitored system similar to the other ones that have been approved by the county, or is this an unmonitored?
It's monitored by the property owner. It does have alarms that are placed in the property that they'll go off if the system It does have alarms that are placed in the property that they'll go off if the system is nearing capacity, and then the owners would then call for a supplemental pump.
Other questions, anyone?
Yeah, one question. If the house to the left of this property had had the same issue, they would not be eligible for pump and halls, is that correct?
Right. If it was under 300 feet, so it would have to extend to the city sewer line.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Would the owner's representative like to add anything?
I-
You may, but you must come to the podium, please.
Hello, how are you?
Microphone helps, thank you.
Hello. Thank you all for being here. So I'm the property owner.
Yes, ma'am.
Actually, the property that is to the left does have a pump and hall. How they got it in, or if you all approved it, I don't know. But the one to the, if you're standing in front, does have a pump and hall. So, and the tank system that would be in place, it wouldn't be a twice the month system. There is just two people there, and it's not really a half bath. It's a one single bath and then like a little shoddy shower in the basement. So you're not dealing with a large amount of people. You're dealing with two people in a small house. It wouldn't, the cost wouldn't be there. And Martins and Merits, when they pumped it previously, it was round about anywhere between 180 and 245, depending on, I guess, their season or whatever they wanted to charge. So, but yeah, I'm hoping you all approve it, so.
Would you be willing to answer questions if there are any?
Yeah, go ahead.
Any questions? Anyone? Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you.
All right. This is Stonewall?
Yes, but let's see, this is, this isn't a public hearing then. Yes, it is. Okay. Based on the criteria and the fact that it does meet the criteria, I know you know that I'm not a fan of pump and halls, but it does meet the criteria, and I would make a recommendation that we approve, a motion for approval for pump and hall permit for 721 Smithfield Avenue.
Second.
For a motion and a second, is there any discussion? Supervisor Trout?
Aye.
Supervisor Dunn?
Nay, the provoking nay.
Supervisor Lofton?
Aye.
Supervisor Wells?
Aye.
Supervisor Slaughter?
Aye.
Supervisor McCarthy?
No.
Chair votes, chair, that was no. Chair votes aye, and the motion carries. That will bring us to board liaison reports. Are there any? None? Citizen comments on any issue that you might like to bring to our attention? Have your name, magisterial district, and limit your comments to three minutes or less, please.
Before you start the clock, if I may, my husband is present and would like to defer his three minutes to me. Is that allowable? So I can have a total of six minutes?
Discretion of the body.
Discretion of the chair. We'll do it this time.
Okay.
Let's not make a habit of it.
I want to also, before you start the clock, ask if I can request a clarification on something. If the public hearing has remained open and is continued, why did you guys vote without asking for any public comments when it came to approving the procedures from the Public Works Committee?
County procedures.
So they didn't, it didn't-
They're not subject to public hearing.
Okay, all right.
We left, we left public hearing open in order to give more opportunity for input.
Okay.
The state code only requires us to hold one.
I gotcha, okay.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman and board members. My name is Beth Shalapp, and I'm a resident of the Mountain Falls Park subdivision in the Back Creek District. Tonight, I want to address several things, one of which is this board's interpretation of the new law regarding sanitary district position, petitions. Sorry, I'm a little bit nervous. Previously, this board determined that the law was vague and gave little guidance. For that reason, you tasked the Public Works Department with three things. The first was to develop a procedure by which to address this type of petition. The second was to provide a cost analysis to this board and the residents of Mountain Falls Park. The third was for the Public Works Department to provide their recommendation to the board regarding the petition to make Mountain Falls Park a sanitary district. To complete the task as directed, the Public Works Committee created a subcommittee that then created the procedures and draft cost analysis for Mountain Falls Park to become a sanitary district. I now come before you to request that this board direct the Public Works Committee to release the draft cost analysis to both this board and the residents of Mountain Falls Park. Providing that information to the residents of Mountain Falls Park and rescheduling the public hearing would allow this board to more accurately gauge the support, or lack thereof, for the petition that was submitted. Since I was present at the Public Works Committee meeting, I am aware that the Public Works Committee intends to recommend against Mountain Falls Park becoming a sanitary district because we have not proven that 50% of persons who own real property support the creation of a sanitary district. There was a great deal of discussion about this point since we, the petitioners, had not yet been given the procedures the Public Works Committee had developed and that this board had, well, you've now approved it, but I had, had yet to approve. It was eventually decided that the Public Works Committee would only provide the procedures that this board tasked them with developing at this time. However, I believe those procedures are incomplete and should be sent back to the Public Works Committee for further development. There is a vital section missing that remains unaddressed. After the meeting, I pointed out to Joe Wilder that there is nothing that details a process to which appeal this board's decision if it votes against the creation of a new sanitary district. It appears that this board and county officials have decided to interpret the law in such a way as to make the petitioners of the Mountain Falls Park sanitary district literally obtain 50% approval of the property owners in Mountain Falls Park. The core issue at this point, preventing our sanitary district petition from moving forward, is Section 21-114, hearing and notice thereof. I too have read this law, and I completely disagree with the way this board and county officials have decided to interpret this section of the law, which states in part, 21-114, hearing and notice thereof. Upon the filing of the petition, the governing body of the county shall fix a day for a hearing on the question of the proposed sanitary district, which hearing shall embrace a finding of fact whether the creation of the proposed district or enlargement of the existing district is necessary, practical, fiscally responsible, and supported by at least 50% of persons who own real property, one, in the proposed district, or, two, in case of enlargement, the area proposed to be included in an existing district. All interested persons who reside in or who own real property in a proposed district or an existing district in case of enlargement shall have the right to appear and show cause why the property under consideration should or should not be included in the proposed district or enlargement of same at such hearing. If you start with the premise and acknowledge that the 50% determination is contained within the Section 21-114 of the law, hearing and notice thereof, I would argue that this section of the law is in fact giving you guidance and the tools by which you are to determine if it's supported by 50% of the persons who own real property within a proposed district and should be achieved through having a public hearing. This board should be able to extrapolate from the feedback at the hearing whether or not 50% of the property owners who own real property of a proposed district are in favor or against becoming a sanitary district and then vote accordingly. After speaking with Chairman De Haven, I was informed the Board of Supervisors follows Dillon's rules of law. Therefore, I do not agree with this board's decision to impose the sanitary district petitioners to a standard which is not directly prescribed in Section 21-114. Nowhere in Section 21-114 does it state that the petitioners are required to obtain 50% of the property owner's signatures to determine if it is supported by 50% of the property owners who own real property within a proposed district. However, if you do not agree with my interpretation, I would request that you ask the county attorney, Rod Williams, to seek clarification of the law from the Virginia Legislature in Richmond before making a final vote on this matter. I would like to believe that this board consists of open-minded individuals who remember that the residents of Mountain Falls Park are voting tax-paying county residents and are entitled to your thoughtful diligent consideration in this legal matter. Thank you for your time.
Anyone else like to comment on any issue? Anyone? Seeing no one, move on. Board of Supervisors comments, are there any?
Mr. Chairman?
Supervisor Lofton?
Mr. Chairman, if I may, the Board of Supervisors has identified the expansion of our commercial industrial tax base in order to ensure a viable and thriving economy as one of our core values. Workforce housing has been identified as a need in the community by the Economic Development Authority and Regional Affordable Housing Coalition in support of economic development land uses by providing housing opportunities for workers that are needed to meet the labor demands for local industrial, commercial, and public sector jobs. The U.S. Census Bureau identifies Frederick County as having a median household income of $68,929 for a family of four. Workforce housing provides an affordable housing option for qualifying families that average 60% of local median household income. This in turn provides an opportunity for workers to reside in the community in which they work and not have to commute from other areas that offer more affordable housing. I have been in discussions with the group that proposes to develop, own, and operate a workforce housing community that would be located in the Back Creek District within a reasonable proximity of industrial, commercial, and public sector workplaces, and more specifically, it would be between Route 37 and Apple Valley Road at the intersection of Middle Road. This proposal will require an amendment to the Comprehensive Policy Plan, Kernstown Area Plan, and an expansion of the urban development area boundary. This will begin the planning process necessary to determine the appropriateness of creating a workforce housing community opportunity in Frederick County, and I would make a motion to begin that process to the amendment to the Comprehensive Policy Plan, Kernstown Area Plan.
For the motion, is there a second?
Second, Mr. Chairman.
Second, is there any discussion? All those in favor, aye.
Um, I-
All right. Sorry.
Just discussion, if we may. I, we have, I'm still left.
Yes, yes.
Okay, I, first of all, I appreciate Mr. Lofton, what you've done, but honestly, I did not pick my emails up this evening, and you had 4:07, it looks like, when it was sent out. So frankly, I don't feel like we've had enough time to digest this material, and I wonder if we could be allowed a bit more time. And I guess I'm a little curious as to amending the comp plan, since we already have residential units already approved in other areas of the county, so I-
If you're asking for a comment-
I am.
It's the right of any supervisor to sponsor a CPPA analysis.
Out of the norm.
His motion, yes, out of the normal routine.
Very well.
Each supervisor has that right. Now, if you're asking Supervisor Lofton a specific question about delaying, we'll ask him to answer.
I would rather not. This doesn't put anything in ink. All this does is start the process, which will give you all the information that will be needed in order for us to confirm whether or not we make an amendment to the Comprehensive Plan in that Kernstown area.
Okay.
I hope that answers your question.
It does. It just has caught me a little bit by surprise. I would have expected a little more notification, but-
Yeah, and I apologize. Like, I've been working with the group that proposes to do this for some time now, and we've just come up with, we believe it will work. It appears to be a good area, but we do need the Comprehensive Plan Amendment, and that's why I'm bringing it, so we can just start the process, so that staff can look at what it would take to make that happen and bring us back something that we can look at, debate, discuss, and decide whether or not that's what we want to do.
Further discussion, anyone? All those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Send that forward to Comprehensive Plan Program Subcommittee. Other comments, Board of Supervisors comments, are there any?
Mr. Chairman?
Supervisor McCarthy?
Two comments. One, relative to the statements that Ms. Shalapp just made with regard to the public works procedures that were set forth, I just would like to point out that I think the Public Works Committee went out of their way to try and find a way to give the greatest benefit of the doubt to the applicants in order to keep this moving forward so as not to short-circuit an application under the new law. So I want to point that out. I also like to point out that with regard to the information on the draft cost analysis of the work to be done at Mountain Falls Park, and in particular, that that information is part of the public record, is attached to our agenda tonight, so that is available to the public as part of our agenda, if that's requested. On a personal note, I would like to thank the Winchester, or, I'm sorry, the Frederick County Fire Department, specifically Company 20, Reynolds Store Fire Hall, for the outstanding work that they did on my behalf and my family's behalf this past week. Their response was quick. It was thorough and professional. I just want to thank them personally for all the work they did this week. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Any other comments, anyone? Two of yours are done.
Delegate Chris Collins is drafting a bill which will call for a referendum to allow a county to equalize the county meals tax with the meals tax of an adjacent city. If passed by the General Assembly and signed by the governor, any county could put this issue as a referendum on the ballot in November of 2019 with implementation in January of 2020. Frederick County needs to raise money to meet the demands of a growing population. Meals taxes are discretionary. Real estate taxes are mandatory. A meals tax equalization would increase county revenue. I'd like to introduce a resolution to ask the board to support the Collins bill. That will help Delegate Collins to work with his colleagues to pass this bill.
I think it's safe to assume that we can consider that at our next meeting.
We can prepare that.
Sure. Anyone else?
One other quick comment, Mr. Chairman. I'd also like to thank the Frederick County officers that were, that followed the star the last two nights. It was a cold night, but we appreciate their help in dealing with the crowds. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Mr. Chairman, I had an opportunity to attend the independent study for middle schools at the Lutheran Home on Tuesday, and it's one of the events that we are invited to attend that I try to make every opportunity to go. As always, the work is outstanding by the students, and it's amazing the topics of discussion or study that they've undertaken, and you wonder how they come up with such wonderful project ideas. Anything from the opioid crisis and what impact that perhaps has had on their life to electric cars and just fascinating topics, vegan diets. It's amazing how health-conscious and the amount of work that they put into these projects. So it's always a very, very enlightening experience, and I just can't thank our teachers and educational personnel for all the work they do to support the students of Frederick County. Outstanding work.
Thank you. Anyone else? Mr. Chairman Lofton?
Mr. Chairman, I move, no, actually, Merry Christmas to everybody. Mr. Chairman, I move to adjourn.
I should adjourn. All those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. We'll stand adjourned. And the board certainly does wish you and your families a joyous holiday season and a Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year and a Happy Hanukkah.
Thank you.
Thank you. The legend.